Is this it? Sorry, everybody, I'm not used to this. Welcome, everyone, and thanks for being here. This is the January 3 regular meeting of the Yellow Springs Village Council. We have just come out of an executive session that had been previously scheduled and noticed in accordance with ORC. I apologize for information yesterday that it was being canceled, but we were strongly encouraged by our solicitor to maintain the session, so we did. As at any executive session, information was shared, but no decisions were made. Thanks for understanding. We've already called the roll, but I will ask the clerk to call it again so that folks will know everyone at the table. Judy, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Wintrae.
Here.
Pausch.
Here.
Sims.
Here.
McQueen.
Here.
Cansling.
Here.
Also present are village manager Patty Bates, assistant village manager Melissa VanZant, and our solicitors from Coolidge Walters, Connor, and Christopher Brock.
And folks, this is a very packed house, so I don't think we have any seats available, so our apologies to the folks who have to be standing. I'd ask everybody to please turn off any devices, any noises, any lights. I know that there are folks that are live streaming on their phones. Please, just be respectful. All filming is allowed. Just be respectful of those around you and try not to obstruct their view or get in their way. I'd like to thank, first of all, Judy Kidner, our community access station manager Susan Gardner, and our tech team, Bartley with tech advisors upstairs, for setting this all up for us today. They worked very hard all day. We have never had live broadcast access in this room. So, we felt it very important that we be in this room. Obviously, we see why, but we also feel it's important to broadcast live to the folks at home who aren't able to come to meet. So, I appreciate their work in getting this done. And Judy also worked very closely to pull village mediation team together to help us facilitate the meeting. As I said, this is a regular council meeting with an agenda that had been previously agreed upon and published, but given recent events, I'd like a motion to table the published agenda until the January 17 meeting and focus tonight's meeting only on the events of the New Year's Eve ball drop.
Second?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thanks. Council and our management team clearly recognize the significance of decisions made to end the New Year's Eve ball drop at a time and manner unexpected by attendees and unacceptable to this community. We know the potential for injury and further escalation was great and are pleased that things didn't get even more out of hand thanks to the cool heads of a great many folks who were there. We also recognize the importance of being as transparent as possible about what did happen, our responses, and joint solutions. I'd like you to understand that we don't have all the answers yet to everything we want to know, but we will get those answers. I'd like to lay out the process for tonight's meeting. When I'm done speaking, I'm going to turn the floor over to Patty Bates for some comments, and then to Chris Connor, our village solicitor, to review some things that they have to say. Then, we will hear from citizens who are directly impacted or simply want to express their views. We encourage your participation, but with the expectation that order decorum and respect be preserved. And we want to hear as many voices as possible, so we ask you to work with our facilitators to make that happen. We have some great folks here to help us. Fred Bartonstein and Jaylen Rowe will explain the ground rules and manage the queue. Bernadette Okun will be our scribe to track your comments and questions. We will listen to your comments, but will not be responding to individual speakers or questions at a time. At the end of the public comment period, if there are any items we're able to answer, we will, but it is important to understand that we won't have all the answers. We've already tentatively scheduled a meeting on January 30th where we expect more information to be presented. And at that time, I'd also like to ask Judith and Ryan to speak to a couple of efforts that are already going forward with the justice system task force and the HRC and the local policing vision statement to describe work that's ongoing. Out of respect for the time of the attendees, we will end public comment at 9:00 and bring it back to council for next step in council comments. That may include additional public comment, but we need to get to that point, stop, see where things stand, see how we're going to go forward. And there will be other opportunities to speak to. Now, I'd like to turn the floor over to Fred Bartonstein and Jaylen Rowe to lay the ground rules for us and talk about this further.
Yeah, why don't you do the presentations first, and then I'll lay the ground rules for the public input. You said you were going to do presentations first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead. Thank you, everyone. My name is Patty Bates, and I am the village manager. And I have some statements that I would like to read from myself, and then I also have an important statement from Chief Dave Hale. We will have no outbursts like that, please. We are trying to maintain decorum. We will be answering questions. We will end this meeting if this is the kind of response we get. I first want to note that the investigation into why the New Year's Eve celebration ended early is ongoing, but it appears that the officer in charge deviated from his instructions. We don't yet know why or what his reasoning was for doing that because he is on injury leave, and we cannot ask him those questions until he's out. I also want to point out that in previous incidents, when warranted, there has been action taken once the investigations were concluded. Once this investigation concludes, if action is warranted, it will be taken. Now, I want to read to you Chief Hale's statement. I first would like to apologize to all of the citizens of Yellow Springs and any other citizen from out of town who attended the New Year's Eve ball drop. I know that the actions of the officers on scene damaged the trust and relationship the police department shares with the community. I have reviewed the in-car camera footage and the reports from the officers, and upon initial evaluation, I cannot determine any circumstances that would justify the officers on scene during the New Year's Eve celebration shutting down the event early. After the officers on scene made a very poor decision to shut down the event early, they compounded the error by using extremely poor tactics, utilizing their cruisers, sirens, horns, and horns instead of being on foot, trying to verbally gain compliance. Two of the officers on duty during the New Year's Eve event have worked for the New Year's Eve event before, which has historically not only been an event that allows the community to mingle and bond, but also allows the police department personnel to meet residents and promote community relations. Going into this year's event, there was no reason to believe New Year's Eve would be any different. With that in mind, I realized and proved the event to happen with the four officers and no supervisor. In retrospect, this is a decision that I clearly regret. Clearly, this year, any positive influence gained during the past years has been shattered. I have determined that the New Year's Eve events have so outraged numerous citizens of Yellow Springs, many of whom I know to be level-headed and supporters of the police, that I believe the best way to heal the rift is for me to resign from my position of acting. You guys, many of you know me, and I am a seven-generation person here in Yellow Springs. So, we want to find results and conclusions, and we want to hear everyone, but we've got to do it in an orderly manner. So, thank you. Help me do my job, I appreciate it. I have found my time as chief to, at times, be trying, but overall, I have found it to be a positive experience, meeting many warm and wonderful people, and I have found many small-town heartwarming activities that I will surely miss. I would ask the citizens of Yellow Springs to attempt to look at the overall actions of the Yellow Springs Police Department over the years during events such as street fair and Fourth of July celebration and prior New Year's Eve ball drops, instead of focusing on the inexcusable events from this year. Thank you, Patty. Chris?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Chris Connor. I am the village solicitor. My comments are going to be brief. I want to set some expectations on what everyone can expect as this process moves forward, not just this evening, but into the future. Karen has indicated that the intention is to have another public meeting on January 30th. I just want to caution people that, under Ohio law, there is an ongoing investigation into the events that occurred. There is the possibility of criminal prosecution, which means, under Ohio law, those records do not become public until the conclusion of those cases, which means, on January 30th, you will still be operated with incomplete facts. Once those matters are concluded, there is a reasonable expectation that everyone would have that those records will become public, they will be thoroughly reviewed, everyone here will have an opportunity to review them to the extent that they wish, and there will be further discussions on that as the process moves forward. So, I share that with you, just to be mindful that things are not going to go as fast as some of the you may want that to happen, but we have the laws in place, we've got it here to this. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Now, I would turn over the meeting to Fred Bartonstein and Jaylen Rowe.
Great. Bernie, if you would pull the ground rules down for me. This is Bernadette Okun from the village mediation program. As Karen mentioned, the first one is respectful communication. Second, there won't be any back and forth. Address your comments to council. People will queue up if you wish to speak behind two microphones, one on this side, one on that side. We're going to start with Jaylen's side, which is that side, and then we'll alternate one to the other. We do have a lady in a wheelchair who we will get the microphone to, rather than have to wait in line. We're going to set a timer for three minutes, and when you hear it go off, I will stand up and we will ask you to finish your thought. You may re-enter the queue, but be aware of others that are still wanting to speak. Input is being recorded. Bernadette is going to record it on flip chart paper, and the video of tonight's forum will be available at the village website any time. We're going to stop at 9:00 and give the council an opportunity to speak. As Karen said, if there are more people after that that want to talk, we will do that. So, Jaylen, if you will start your side.
Thank you. We'll start with Lance.
Yes, my name is Drew Carroll.
Can I, Jaylen? Just a second. One moment, Lance. We do need names. That's one of our requirements.
I said one.
I know, I know. I just want to make sure that everybody else knows, that just for the record, because this is an official public record, these will go into the minute. So, first and last name for our clerk of council. Thank you.
My name is Lance Gritt. I've lived here for 35 years, and dropped the ball for 17. I would like to thank village for getting the line across Zenas so that I could drop the ball to you guys. The other line is, we've taken one. I also, and I want everybody to react to this, I would like to thank the police for their presence, because without the police's presence, we would not have the ball drop. We never had an incident until this year. In fact, they were very tolerant, very tolerant in the years past. Okay, a little history, and please don't get upset if I get this wrong, about the ball drop. The ball originally, I think, that might be legend, came from Antioch College Ball. Somebody confiscated it for their own party, and then through the years, they started by dropping it from the Little Art Theater, and then, then when I came to town 35 years ago, it was being dropped from the clock that used to be in front of the bank. Now, that lasted, oh, until the bank. I don't know if the bank governed the clock, but after that, we even employed a cherry picker a couple of years to drop the ball. And then, somebody put at the line between the hardware store and the light bulb. That's the line I've been using for the last 17 years. Since the previous statement has already been made, pardon my speech, it's gone by, so I don't have to do that. Okay. We all know that normally, the ball drop starts at 11:30. People come in and gather gradually. About 10% of those people don't make it to the ball drop. They don't make it because most of the people are walking, or anybody drives. It's normally parties that say, hey, let's go to the ball drop. All these different parties come and leave their party, join together, have a reunion of classmates, families, people they haven't seen in years, and it's almost like, it's almost like a family reunion. I normally start the ball drop by giving a speech. Speech is, "Yellow Springs family, they're gathered here this time to renew connections with love and peace. Please respect police officers, and please grab the trash and put it in the trash can to the litter." That's how I normally start. But this time, I couldn't get the power to the light. I didn't get the ball until 11:51, and then, that was a battle I couldn't give this. So, in conclusion, we've already gone over why this happened, and I don't have to go over that. So, most of the time, there was, police officers said at the bank, police officers said across the street, police officers are either in the seat, and that worked perfectly fine as I walked around. Had no incidents of 17, it was long since. And I think you can check records for the Yellow Springs News, and I don't think there was any incidents of teenagers getting in trouble. So, I thank you for letting me do this, and I hope I didn't forget you.
Thank you, thanks, Lance, and thanks for all of your support for the ball drop.
My name is Athena McPhannon. I'm also known as Mira Barker. I apologize for my composure. I told myself I'd be able to remain calm after my police incident. I still am. Especially when I come to the Bryant Center. So, I do ask that they're not being loud and sharp noises while I try to speak. I'm not going to tell my experience at New Year's. I'm sure lots of people will have a similar story. I do want to talk about two things. One is that I've heard a lot of people say that there's never been an incident like this at New Year's before, and my experience last year does not hold that out. The year before that was right after my incident with Officer Penrod, and I don't remember whether I attended it in New Year's. But in 2015 and 2016, I brought a sign in Memorial to Mir Rice, and I was determined to stay there until the last person left, and stood on the sidewalk. What I noticed, much more quickly than in other years, and I've been attending the New Year's Ball for quite some time, is that the police cleared the roads in a way that I was not familiar with. Now, since I was having panic attacks at the time, I tried to chalk that up to my experience, but I noticed that while people were still in the streets, the police did use their cruisers to clear the road. They did use their bullhorn, and instead of getting out and talking to people, it sounded very frightening to me. I packed up, I tried to stay as long as I could, but I had to leave. It was nothing like this year, but it wasn't the same as it has been in old years. And what this spoke to me is the creep of militarization, the creep of a police culture that is having difficulty getting a grip on the issues that is plaguing it. The second thing I want to bring up, and to me, it also connects to the New Year's issue, though it doesn't technically, is that on November 6, an activist attempted to record a police stop. And as a result, that activist has been charged with a misdemeanor. Now, I've gotten the videos, and I've watched them, and I've read the police report, and there were some concerning things that I saw there that I saw repeated on New Year's. First, when the activist approached, the officer that communicated with her was immediately nervous and anxious. He didn't try to de-escalate. His interactions with her only escalated and brought more of a crowd. Second, this person complied. There were things that you guys are going to have to sit down and talk with the activist communities, because we're going to have different opinions of whether we're interfering, how close is too close, whether when you ask us to step back, that means that you're trying to keep us from recording something, but you legitimately have a need, and you're going to have to do this on a rolling basis. You can't wait for an event and then to say, well, this was legitimate, the police said so. I'll wrap this up, and then I'll pass the mic on. But when I read that report, I was horrified. I was horrified to see that the report read as if you took my experience, and instead of learning how to move forward and repair and improve, it was almost like you used it as a rulebook on how to make sure you can taint there, how do I say this? You can tear them down in order to protect, to CYA. And that was not what I wanted to see out of, I wanted to see an improvement. You know, there was an officer at all three incidents who was at my incident, and I don't know what to say about that, except I see him calm at all three incidents. I don't know what to think about this, but this isn't an isolated incident. Mrs. Crete?
Okay, we're now at Stage Right. Please state your name.
I'm in the storeroom for Skip Leeds, I'm assistant professor of family medicine at Wright State University School of Medicine, and I came up to talk because I was a ground zero eyewitness for the worst of what transpired 10 minutes after me. You've already heard from Athena that a motorcade of police moved up and slowly used their cars and bullhorns to clear the street. That is all there is. I have yet to hear an account that I think accurately reflects what I saw and experienced right in front of the Little Art, but what basically happened from the point that you just heard was that a young man was trying to gesture to a police officer who was in one of the cars. There had been reports that he was knocking or pushing. I didn't see that, all I could see was that he was trying to get the policeman's attention. The next thing I know, I see a short, you know, short-cropped hairball policeman come flying out of the car and body slammed this kid unceremoniously. Kid hit the ground hard, but he rebounded, he tried to get away because he was completely shocked and surprised. He started to stumble backwards and move away. Crowd surged in and tried to establish some kind of order, help the kid, or tried, you know. I have to say that a lot of them were not pleased at what they were seeing, and, you know, they were, I think, they wanted to push back. The boy was, at this point, kind of propelled backwards as the crowd surged in between them. At this point, two other officers joined this officer, and a female police officer drew a taser and fired it at the young man. However, he was wearing a winter coat or something, in some way, it was not effective, and I understand one of the barbs actually hit someone else. But that was difficult to see because of all of the chaos at this point. And then, the boy was thrown up against the wall by the Little Art, and then the crowd surged again, and it was kind of, there was a separation kind of force between the officer and the boy, and then he kind of moved northward and took off, as far as I know, and I understand he's since been detained and in jail. But that's what I saw. So, I saw, you know, certainly amounts to be excessive police force right from the get-go, it happened right in front of me, and I just, you will hear a lot of different accounts of this, I want to make sure that, you know, you're hearing from somebody this close what it really looks like. What I want to say about this is, I think what we saw on New Year's Eve was a violation of the social contract. I think the compact between the police and the police has been violated, that what we saw that night was the police presenting as a solution in search of a problem. And I'm no expert, I'm pretty sure it's supposed to be the other way around. There was escalation instead of de-escalation, provocation instead of peacekeeping. The cops are supposed to be stabilizers, not destabilizers, and sometimes the best thing to do is nothing at all. If they had done that, we wouldn't have had the altercation on New Year's Eve. You know, less is more, and I think less is more should be sort of a guiding principle for the kind of policing we want in this community. It's becoming harder. It's becoming rude, and the kind of policing we deserve. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Scott Osterholm. I'm an alternate on the Human Relations Committee. I'm not here in that role. I'm not even here as a citizen. I'm here as a parent. One thing that we liked about the New Year's Eve ball drop, this whole community, is all of us were able to come together at one moment, no matter what our differences, and we all were united, and we all had fun, and we all knew our children were safe. My best friend and my girlfriend, her daughter's 12 years old, was scared to death by the police and by the reaction of the crowd, too. I couldn't answer this little girl's question when she wanted to know why the police did what they did, but as we've, time has moved on, I can answer the question now, because I did go talk to Chief Hale today, and he told me directly, as a man, as a person, as a human being, it's basically foobar, how his officers acted. He admitted that to me. So, all you all can applaud what you want, but at least he went out as a man of respect. Now, with that being said, and in light of that, I would like to seriously look at Dave Meister for chief, because he lives here, he has children, he's a human. And the Senate partners, because I also found my topic to do, where we all thought there was resolutions and ordinances to protect us on this, there isn't. So, maybe it's time for council for New Year's Eve to put a timeframe of 11:30 to 12:30, with no later than 12:45 a.m. New Year's Eve that us citizens can go out there with our families and enjoy the New Year's Eve ball drop like we have been doing for generations. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gavin DeVore Leonard. A meeting was called following concerns about racial disparities in policing in July 2016, specifically events in Baton Rouge, Minneapolis, and Dallas, and I hope we can continue to keep racial disparities in mind as we seek better outcomes for policing in the village. Since the summer, I've been working with a team following those meetings on, and a team of volunteers over the past several months to research best practices on a range of policing policy issues, and have been in touch with the various groups working in this space as well, HRC, Justice Assistant Task Force, the village manager, and other folks. I'm here speaking as an individual, though, about what I've seen and heard from a wide swath of the community, and after reviewing dozens of documents about best practices. Nearly half of our village revenues are dedicated to public safety, and yet there are many reasons to believe that we could be doing much, much better in this area. I believe the village should commit to a comprehensive process to improve policing policy as quickly as possible, because I believe the event that happened on New Year's Eve is a natural result of core policies, not a one-time event. This process should include, but not necessarily be limited to, improving hiring and recruitment practices, improving training, particularly on implicit bias, updating use-of-force policies, improving evaluation of officers, improving data collection to ensure it matches our needs, and working toward a meaningful citizen review board. And all of this should be done after clarifying our village core values, police values, and what specifically we mean by community policing, to ensure that our public safety approach is in line with our community culture, which I believe is more interested in a justice system focused on transformation and restoration than criminalization. If we set up clear policies, we can set up a clear structure for evaluation and accountability. Village governance and village employees should be fully committed to this process. If individuals are not committed to these goals and processes, I hope they will leave on their own or be replaced with people who are on board. I believe all of this, with dedicated resources, could and should be completed on an ambitious timeline of three to six months. Public safety is the biggest priority of the village, and we should see this as an opportunity to harness community energy and make our community so much better. This work will take the engagement of all of us in this room, and I hope folks will continue to show up for the coming weeks, months, and years. If we make these changes and stay engaged, not only will we greatly reduce the likelihood of another incident that shocks our community, we could actually become a model and leader on police-community relations, something we can all be proud of. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brett McEcker. I want to make sure it is known that this issue is not just about New Year's Eve. This kind of heavy-handed behavior from YSPD has been happening for some time. Only now have some people been able to witness it for themselves. This past fall, I was having a bonfire on private property of my landlord Rose Pelzell with her express permission. A few hours into it, we noticed a squad car pull up down the private driveway, park, and turn its lights out. We waited to be approached, which was approximately 10 minutes later. At this point, three officers approached and said they were following juveniles who had committed a crime. We told them, "No, we are all adults and heard nothing." They proceeded to interrogate us for nearly half an hour despite no evidence of a crime being committed. In the course of this interrogation, two officers revealed they were spying on us from Don Park with night vision goggles and listening to our conversation. After a protracted discussion with the officers, which included interrogating a terrified and crying 19-year-old girl who had done nothing wrong or illegal, the officers left, our bonfire quickly disbanded, the night ruined by unnecessary police intrusion. Is this the kind of policing we need in Yellow Springs? To have every on-duty officer, three in total, spying on citizens and harassing them on private property? I'm also not fond about being lied to about their reasons for approaching us. If juveniles have committed a crime, why pull every officer to a bonfire filled with adults for half an hour? I raised this question to the officers, who did not respond, as they knew well it was a lie. I also have this entire incident on video, in case anyone questions the veracity of my claims here. I also resent officers acting as if being nervous to talk to them is an indication of having something to hide. If I had the power to throw someone in jail on my word alone, I doubt YSPD officers would welcome me into their homes to question them. One final point, I could go on for hours with examples like my own: people being ripped from their cars, residents accosted and tackled for walking home while appearing agitated, people of color being pulled over for nonexistent moving violations, and on and on. New Year's is just the most visible evidence of this behavior. Please, do not make the mistake of making this solely about New Year's. YSPD needs to be fundamentally changed. This wonderful and law-abiding entity deserves so much better. Thank you.
Okay, Seth?
Hi, I am Tony Berry. I own Superfly Comics and Games in downtown Yellow Springs. In some ways, I feel like I'm just going to echo what Brett just said. But I do have a comment that I want to issue to one particular council member, but I think it's important that everybody up here hear it. Mary Ann McQueen, when you were running for council, the night you convinced me to vote for you, you were meeting with groups of the populace, and you met with a group of people, myself included. And in that room, that night, I was not alone in my concern that police overreach and abuse is a very real concern for our community. And you voiced that you do hear our concerns, but you had not witnessed it firsthand. This is an unignorable event. This is not new. This has been going on since beyond any one police chief. This is a systemic problem. This is your chance to witness it.
I want to thank everyone for getting a chance to speak to you all.
What is your name?
My name is Sean Tulecki. So I think this is a wake-up call. We have a gap between the community and the police. We also have a gap between what we would expect of the police and what we are getting. Now, you guys, as council members, you guys are here. The police aren't here, okay? Why are the police not here? Maybe there's good reasons. Why this is structured this way, but you guys are in the middle of that gap. You are between the community and the police. It is up to you whether or not the police are held to account for their actions. It is up to you whether or not the police represent the community. And it is up to you guys that the process of having them be held to account is transparent. I come to you today as a community member. I've lived here many times, and I saw what happened. I witnessed the event on New Year's Eve. They did not ask people to leave. They did not ask people to disperse. And that, I think, I want every one of you to think about, why would they not do that? What happened that they would not do that? And I think ultimately, there is an issue of dignity. They were not giving the community the dignity that we deserve. Now, I would just want to also make a point about this gap between the community and the police. All right, they do good things. Let's not get that wrong. They do good things. But that gap is serious, and it goes back many decades. I come to you also today as the rape victim of Steve Alexander, who, when he raped me, abused me very, very bad. He was working for the police. He was busting kids for drugs. He was a crackhead. What I want you to take to heart is that he saw himself fighting a war against hippies. And I was asked to wear a wire to go up to John Ayersman to get his children to grow quacks they could bust John Ayersman years before this bust was made. Aaron McCurdy, his, her husband, was also taken down by this operation. He was a known pedophile, and they used him anyway. And that, I got it. My time is up, but I want you all to take, I want you all to take to heart that there is a very real cultural gap between the police, who sometimes, you know what, they're human. That's the reality of it. They're human. They can make mistakes. And it's up to us to create structures to make sure that, as human beings, they are held to account when they mess up, when they have ideas in the back of their head that prejudice them in a situation so that they don't give dignity to the community and ask them to disperse.
Thank you, Sean.
My name is Albon Bolle. As a longtime member of the community, and I guess, let's, I have to say it straight first. My dad was the original ball dropper, so just... He would be upset if I didn't mention that. So I've grown up here. I've been here my entire life. Went to high school here. And I was a longtime former member of the fire department, so I guess that shapes my perspective somewhat. I don't come as a member of the fire department. I'm no longer with them, but I have had a lot of interactions with the police in Yellow Springs. And again, people are disappointed I was downtown. I saw it. I am also disappointed. And like we've heard, you know, the police are human, and they make mistakes. And I appreciate Chief Hell's comments. I think that it really takes a strong person to, although he's not here, to apologize, at least in writing, and I certainly appreciate that on behalf of the community. So obviously, Mr. Exremay, like I said, I think it would be great if we could also keep sight that we do have very competent, skillful, and very judicious police officers in this community as well. And having worked with them and having seen them work with people in the community and worked on emergency scenes, oftentimes, they are an incredible asset to the community. And I don't want us to lose sight of that as a community and to push away the police officers that do a great job day in and day out. That being said, obviously, I think that we need to hold those accountable. And we need to ensure that this doesn't happen again. I am incredibly proud to be a part of this community, to see everyone here and to have this discourse. I think this is really special, to see so many faces here that I know and faces that I don't, and to come together as a community to voice our concerns and to work to ensure that we have some progress and that we move forward. And I'm also incredibly happy to hear about potential for better community policing. I think that that is something that this is a perfect venue to build upon. So I think that that is, it really is an opportunity as a community to affect and potentially become a new style of policing and something that we can be proud of as a very unique community, having a system in place that protects us, that ensures that the police act in our best interests, and really give us an opportunity to shape something new. So thank you guys very much.
Thanks, Albon.
Hello, I'm Abigail Cobb. I'm speaking to you as a community member, a mother, and a grandmother. I just want to testify as to the family nature of the New Year's Eve ball drop. I have been with my children here since the very beginning, or at least 35 years, because it's something that we do here in Yellow Springs. It's live, it's real, it's not on television. It's like our Fourth of July, our Halloween celebrations. I always wanted those live community events for my children and not to watch something on TV. So for years, I woke them up and put their feet in their boots and brought them down to this event. This year, it so happens that my husband and I went to bed early. We weren't there, but my adult children and my grandchildren were at this event. And I just want to tell you that on New Year's Day, the day after, this is all that my family could talk about. My three grandchildren who were present are all Mills Lawn students. My sixth-grade granddaughter said to me that the police department had just come to Mills Lawn prior to the winter break to talk to the sixth grade, and she said, "I can't understand what happened." She said she couldn't fall asleep for an hour after going home. My fourth-grade grandson said to me, he saw the officer pull out her weapon. He wasn't sure if it was a taser or a gun. He said he didn't know enough. He said he thought maybe it was a gun, maybe he heard gunshots, and he told me he was shaking all over until his mother grabbed him and they ran for the car. And my youngest grandson, who's a second grader at Mills Lawn, said this was the scariest moment of his life. This is an important family event. This is an important community that I love and treasure as a mother and grandmother. We need to do better. We need to be careful.
Hello, my name is Sean DeSey. I've been a resident in Yellow Springs about 45 to 46 years. I grew up here, and what I'm seeing is not acceptable. Okay, yes, we got rid of the officers, I mean, the chief, but my concerns are the officers that are left behind. We gotta look at that. I mean, Patty, I talked to you when you were interviewing Dave, and I addressed my concerns, and what hap, I told you. I mean, I don't want to say I told you so, but exactly. This is a community of family. I mean, somebody driving down the street, that could have been my mother out there. Not only that, we opened up our village for an lawsuit. And talking about New Year's Eve, I've heard other stories. The young man. I'm deeply concerned about our community. And I also blame all of us, every one of us here. It took an action like this for us to come out here when there had been meetings with other groups, and they're lucky to get five or 10 people to come out. Not only do I hold the police officer, the chief, you, Patty, and the village, I mean, the council, but I also hold every person that lives in this community that we let it get this far. That's just not acceptable. This is our town. This is our village, and we should not have let you gotten this far. The stories that I hear from the young people, they can't walk home, they can't have parties. I've been pulled over coming home from work. This is not acceptable. I will not have it from the officers that are left behind and shame on us after this event, we become complacent. We got to show up for every meeting that you guys are holding, because not only am I holding you guys responsible, I'm holding every one of you guys respectfully.
My name is Amy Magnus. I'm coming here to give the perspective of someone who was at the New Year's Eve event and left earlier than most people. I also am speaking from the perspective of a mother of an autistic child. I attended the New Year's ball drop with my husband, my nine-year-old daughter, and our six-year-old son, plus a service dog in training that's supposed to help autistic children. We approached the event from the south and passed the barricade at Limestone and Zenia. I noted that no one was standing by that squad car, which is I, because I usually thank the person who's there for supporting the event. For the countdown, my family stood next to the US Bank, and there were a cluster of three officers there. Everything was normal. I took a video to document the size and the jubilant mood of the crowd. My family then ventured into the crowd to see if we could touch the disco ball for luck. We can have luck with that, but... We greeted several friends, exchanged hugs, and then we decided to leave to get some hot chocolate at the Spirit Go. We exited the square heading north now, up Zenia Avenue, and passed the squad car coming in with its lights flashing and sirens chirping. This surprises to no end. We looked back towards short Zenia, and we noted that the squad car that used to be at Limestone and Zenia was also moving towards the crowd with its lights and sirens on. Despite this unusual action, we could see no police officers addressing the crowd or giving people instructions. We noted the time, 12:10 a.m., and wondered what might be happening in the world. Maybe there's a terrorist attack, and we need to close this down. They would shut down the event early. We looked online, found nothing. We continued down Zenia. Now, unlike prior years, we couldn't walk down the street, because we sat, we looked, and we said, "They took the barricade down." That crowd is near 90% full capacity, you know, full attendance, and they're taking down the barricades. And this is what concerned me. I mean, there's a lot of things that concern us about events, but let's just talk about what I witnessed. Is that at 12:08, the barricades were down, and the quads guards collapsed the security perimeter onto the crowd. This created an unsafe situation. The police officers called a further deterioration of the situation by not communicating their purpose. Instead, officers used flashing lights, loud saggards, and metal against flesh, posturing. lights, loud sirens, and yell against flash, posturing. This made people feel uncomfortable. This made people feel anxious, and we are lucky that this didn't escalate. I am surprised. I'm really proud of our population, how calm they were. I mean, I- These actions and the lack of people to be able to address the police officers, these are the things that caused rage cycles. And I am concerned about the narrative to try and turn this about someone's failure to comply. We must shut down that- This was about a collapsed perimeter. This is a situation where the police turned a beautiful event into a spider trap. There's four things that people need: food, water, shelter, information. We were deprived of two of those things in this case. We were deprived of shelter, we were deprived of information, and we are lucky that this didn't escalate further. Thank you very much.
Hi, can you hear me okay? My name is Sandy King, and I'm 58 years old, and I've lived here most of my life. I grew up here. And I just want to say that I've witnessed over the years excellent policing. And I've been increasingly witnessing horrible policing. And I think that the main key is that we are policing. It's the difference between a police officer and a peace officer. A peace officer, well, let's start with a police officer. A police officer is sure that there's something wrong, that we are wrong. A peace officer knows there's something right and seeks it out. And instead of inflaming and escalating and exploding the situation, as was done with Paul Shank, not to mention, you know, other situations here. But instead of escalating unnecessarily, we need to be calming and cooling and tossing a little sacred water on the person, calming them down. And that's something I have to applaud our former police chief, Jim McKee, for doing- It's a small town, but it has a big impact on the surrounding communities. And surrounding communities are threatened because they don't have, they are not enacting what we enact here. So I'm usually pretty long-winded, and I don't want to do that, because I know other people have things to say, but I just want to reiterate that we don't want to police, we want to peace.
Hi, my name is Karen Gardner. I've lived here for over 20 years. I was also down at New Year's Eve and eyewitness to things that happened. I'm going to keep my comments brief, because I don't want to repeat a lot of what people were saying. But again, the officers drove into the crowd with their sirens blaring, didn't speak with people. And I just want to say that I witnessed many people going up to the cruisers, trying to speak reasonably to the officers, saying, "What are you doing? Why are you doing this?" And Marianne McQueen was also trying to talk very reasonably to the police officers. One of the things that I want to say, because I was trying to talk to them, is that one of the male police officers that was there that night said to me, "We're just trying to follow orders." And I said, "Whose orders are you following? Chief Hale's?" And he said, "No, these are the orders from our sergeant." I said, "What sergeant is that?" And he said Sergeant Knapp. I've seen the letter that's in the packet that people have, from, I guess, from Sergeant Knapp to the officers that evening, and there's no indication that they should close the streets down at 12:08. And I did look at my cell phone, and it was exactly 12:08. So I just want to make that a public record, because that was said to me. I'd also like to say that I think ideally, all of our police officers should live in town. I'm not sure if that's possible. But I do think that in the very least, our police chief should live in town. Patty Bates came down when this incident took place. Apparently, Chief Hale was not there, and he probably would not have made it there in time from his house, his residence. I don't know if this is true. I'm no legal expert. I've been told that the Supreme Court had some ruling where you can't require somebody to live in a certain area because of the work. My idea, and I just want to say this, is that perhaps we could have a financial incentive to have our police chief live in town. So if we hire somebody from out of town, we say to them, you know, "This is what you're going to make. You need to move into town within six months, a year, whatever it is, and then you will make X amount more." That's just an idea that I had. I also noticed that, I believe that the New Year's Eve all was advertised or written about on Dayton.com website, and maybe in the Dayton Daily News, I'm not sure. But I want to say that this has always been, as many people have said, a lovely in-town event, and I'd like to keep it that way. I don't think that we should all advertise it out of town.
Good evening. My name is Christina Pierceaker. I have lived in town for 24 years. I'm a licensed professional counselor, and I specialize in trauma. The first thing I'd like to say is I've had wonderful interactions with Dennis Nipper and Brian Carlson. I have found them to be honest, have a lot of integrity, really care about the community, and be able to defuse a situation relatively quickly. I do not know Chief Hale professionally. I've had no interactions with him, but I've spoken with him personally, just on the street as he's walking around, and I have found him to be friendly. I'd like to thank him for stepping down tonight, whether this has anything to do with him directly or not. I believe he set a good example for all of the other officers on the force and in neighboring communities, that you take responsibility when something happens, whether it is your fault or not. When you are the next person in the line of command, when you are in charge and these people are beneath you, well, you know what I mean, you're their supervisor, you take responsibility. So I would like to thank him for that. Here's what I saw that night. I walked into town, and I was walking with a young friend of mine. He's 22 or 23. And I said, "There are a lot of sheriff's cars in town tonight and cars from other jurisdictions." And he said, "Yeah, I noticed that. Is that normal?" He'd never been here for New Year's before. I said, "It's not." But I said, "You know what? Maybe our people got the night off. This is a gravy job for New Year's. If I were a police officer, I'd be a fool and not want to work this job for New Year's." I didn't think anything of it. I got downtown, and I saw that Dennis Nipper was not at his usual post, which is between Town Drive and Speedway. That's where he just is for New Year's. Instead, there was a sheriff's car parked outside of Town Drive. The Ball Drop, we got rid of that nasty, stinking year. Its bloody corpse was dragged through the street. People cheered. That year is over, and we never speak of it again. I said, "I've had enough. I stomped on its corpse. I want a drink." I looked at my phone. It was 12:06. We walked towards Peaches. As we walked towards Peaches, well, there was one of the SUV police vehicles that had been guarding the main intersection in town. It had two officers in it, and I actually don't know who they are, but they were Yellow Springs police officers. I waved to them. I don't know what kind of look this was. I was not smiled at. I was not waved at. This was 12:06 when I saw my watch. I got to Peaches, and there wasn't a line. I got my drink, came outside to have a cigarette, and I saw the reflections of the lights, and I heard people screaming. What are the ramifications of this? There were dozens of people downtown who had not been here before. The first time in Yellow Springs. They will never come back. They will tell their friends not to come back. People are terrified of the police. This puts our citizens at risk, and this puts our officers at risk. The next day, in a 10-minute walk, I saw three sheriff's cars strolling through town. Yesterday morning, my best friend and I did what we have done almost every day for the last three and a half years. We sat downtown in his car, had a cigarette, and waited for the coffee shop to open before he went to work. I guess an officer decided they needed to run his plates. I've had enough. Do something about this, because this puts everybody at risk. This puts our officers at risk, and this puts people here at risk. I specialize in trauma, and I'm hearing too many stories.
Hi, I'm Matthew Carson. The first thing I want to address is use of public space. First of all, public space is used for two reasons, right? To go shopping or go to work. And that's pretty much how we like it in Yellow Springs, apparently. It's why we have Street Fair, right? That's a shopping event. New Year's Eve is one of the only events where we don't just shop or work, right? That's one of the only places, times when our place is open for us to use, right? So that's obviously off the table now after this. But I want to address the police directly, too. The police in Yellow Springs use violence consistently. This isn't a one-off, okay? Council has previously called for further training for officers, which has led to the police posting ridiculous online core certificates all over Facebook. I'm sure some of you have seen that at this point. Some of our council members are still calling for community policing tactics, for which, those of you who don't know who that is, this is a Department of Justice program that encourages tactics of police embedding within communities with the business owners, local officials, religious leaders, and nonprofit leaders to build trust between the police and those who rule us. Effectively, it's a surveillance and public relations program that creates harmony within the ruling class while allowing the exact same police violence to occur to marginalize people. No, no, it's an actual, it's an actual, it's an actual thing. I mean, I can cite this. It's not a problem. When I say marginalize people, I mean specifically working-class people, especially people of color. I mean LGBT people, especially LGBT people of color. I mean mothers and children, especially mothers and children who are people of color. Are you seeing the common thread? More training means a larger set of tools for the police to deploy, and more surveillance and more violence, okay? This is just one of a series of events where the police have instigated violence in our community. The difference this time is that everyone was there to see it, and the people rejected it, okay? And we should be really proud of our community for not tolerating this from the police. I am. But that night, skinhead cops terrorized my family on New Year's Eve. They went through the crowd of children, mothers and babies, seniors and disabled people, vulnerable people, and they terrorized us. That is what happened, okay? That is what happened. We all know what happened when we were there, right? We need to fire the officers, slash the budgets. We need to slash their budgets. We need to take away their tasers and their assault rifles and drop all the charges down and attack. And if you don't, and if you don't, we will recall council.
Hello, my name is DeShonte Foster. I'm the brother of David Carlson, and I very much appreciate that statement that you just made about my brother. Now, first off, my brother is a father of two children, and he also has custody of my 14-year-old little brother. He has done events with the Camus Open, worked with you guys in the past in the Summer Hand and everything like that. I do not see my brother being an altercation or aggressive towards an officer where they would need to use excessive force as a taser. I would really like to see the officers that were involved in that situation held accountable for poor policing tactics. And I really wish that none of the in here or anybody else's family would have to be a victim of poor policing. I would definitely like to see charges dropped against my brother, and thank you.
My name's John Bennett. I've lived in town for 22 years-ish. There were three outside police departments brought in to handle us on New Year's Eve. They had dogs. There was the Sheriff's Department of Green County, the Cedarville Police Department, as well as our own. Did I miss anyone? So they brought three. I would like to know what those officers were told to expect when they came to town, because that leads, the mentality that you take going into a situation lends itself to the possibilities. And if they came to town expecting a battle, a 2,000 brigade of crazy, when they got here, they probably decided they were going to dish out some of that. So I would like to know what those police officers were told in advance before they got here. Why were they here? It seems to me that the police state has finally leaked into our community, okay? You can boo me all you want. You can leave a little corset, it's fine. But to look at the financial implications of what they could have had happen, and as you'll notice, in the community, we got out of the ACE Task Force over the last few years. The chief who recently resigned was an advocate of. Now, if you can bully the people in town into having some sort of riot and show that you need more cops, more guns, more tasers to keep these people in check, then that police state is, that's exactly, you're getting exactly what they want. And so as a community, for too long, people have been willing to say, "It didn't happen to me. It doesn't matter." Well, it finally happened to us. It finally kicked in our fucking door. So pay attention. It's important. When somebody in your community needs help, when somebody speaks out against someone who does something ill against them, it's your job as a neighbor, a friend, a family member to help stand up for them. Too long in this country, we have lost our way. We have lost the ability to, our value system. People need to really check that. Go back home. Revisit the family. See where that helps. I would move that we actually disarm the police. I would go across the country. Let them learn to use their words. Let them be trained in hand-to-hand combat. You want to be a bad man and learn to fight. Learn how to do it properly. In England, most officers are unarmed. You can't tell me that Yellow Springs blows off in any spot in England. My name's John Bennett. Ace Life.
My name's Sterling Wright. S-T-E-R-L-I-N-G. Wright as in Wright Brothers. 65 years old, retired. Been here for seven generations. I'm not the only one in this room that's been here for several generations. For all the distinguished members of the panel, it's time to wake up. If you look around this room, there's a lot of people, myself even older, and I will admit that there are several generations that are here tonight. I was there. I saw what happened at 12:08. I was there with my daughter, 19 years old, who was here for college. She convinced me to go to the Ball Drop. I went there, and I saw what was about to happen. I've been here since the 60s, and when I saw what was about to happen, I told my daughter, "It's time to get the hell out of here." Where am I based this knowledge from? There were more different police departments here than when we sat on 68. There were more different police departments here than when we sat on sixty-eight and demonstrated for civil rights. We saw the Green County Sheriff here and the Yellow Springs Police here and Highway Patrol because sixty-eight is thoroughfare. They were called in. They didn't just decide to pop up, they were called in. Today, let's be honest here, a lot of the new members of our community came to this community for the values that we have. We are different, that's why they're here. We are human, we tolerate everyone. The time has come for you to get police, who are not good police officers, but maybe good human beings. There are other people here in this area who are former police officers. Before, we would recruit officers by their character, by their understanding of human nature, and we would teach them how to be police. Now we're bringing people who are excellent police officers who have no idea about the traditions of Yellow Springs and have no idea about our understanding. So the time has come for you to stop getting people to police the community and start getting people who are here to serve the community.
My name is Wesley Jimson. Scott Starworth in this town. I grew up, my name is Jamie. I've seen both sides, dark side and light side of both of this. I have seen the very dark side when I worked for the Green County ACE Task Force and was tricked by fake statements and real statements and thanks to my own heart. I did four years for Green County in prison for drug, money laundering and drug enterprise. I had no more than a thousand dollars. I don't know how to launder money. I'm very, I'm not that smart, I won't lie to you. But I will say that this town has, I have a bulldog on me and I am a bit of a dog. I have a past. I will say that this town has grown a lot more commercialized. So I'm not saying that a lot of police should have been here because this town is still peaceful, but this town has grown a lot away from, I've never been to a village council meeting, but tonight I was like, "I'm going to go to a village council meeting." I heard about it like five hours ago. And I'm telling you, it's going to be a little small meeting and people want to be here. It's going to be like, the ball drop used to be like a little small, you know, thing and people afterwards, maybe forty-five minutes, an hour, whatever, or there afterwards. I was there until twelve-twenty because it's implanted in me from hearing sirens and that "ee, ee." It's like, what is going on? I didn't know what to do. And I mean, everybody tell you around here, I party every, I used to. I used to party every night, drink every night of the bar. That scared me. Yeah, used to. I mean, it's policing, it's been going on for a long time. I mean, I even told on a brother, a friend, back in two thousand and whatever it was, six or four, I don't know, I can't remember anymore. Edie Moser Bacardi was a very good man and I can't believe to this day that he hung himself with all the money that he had and all the things. And for him to only, if they say, when they gave me my paperwork, to say that he told on my friend Mike Rittenhouse for a murder that Mike did, I could never imagine it.
Wesley?
It has nothing. I'm saying, I'm saying, when I pulled up at the house on Allen Street and the officer Brody told me, "No, you shouldn't, you can't go in there." But then Nick Rittenhouse said, "You can come in." And then the sheriff let me in. Ever since then, the police, it's just not the proper police, no, Sasha.
Yeah, let's talk about the subject.
Remember Tim Lopez?
Okay, okay. Wesley?
That's not exactly true.
Wesley, go ahead.
You don't know what you're talking about. I did five years in prison behind the gates, but y'all were very interested in that wall.
Wesley? Wesley? Thank you, Wes.
My name is Scott Wright. And a lot of you probably know me from playing music in town with my boys for years and stuff. I've also been taking over the ball drop since they were about that tall. Can't imagine anything like what happened that night happened while they were there. As somebody who's experienced hearing loss too, I read in that pamphlet there that one of the older members of town came out of theater with their fingers in their ear because of sirens. When I left, I walked past a woman holding an infant baby. It was obviously their very first New Year's Eve. We'll never know if that baby suffered hearing damage from those sirens. We'll never know because that's years down the road. I've got hearing damage through the years, it's not fun. Now, the point I'm trying to make though, and I'm not going to reiterate everything, points have been made beautifully. Nothing would have happened if the cars hadn't started coming through the crowd. I was there, I witnessed that part of it, I saw her. I can vouch for it. But my past experiences with police officers in this town, living here, growing up here, have been good. I remember being at a gas station one time, I just bought a car, walked up to an officer I recognized, I shook his hand, I said, "Man," I said, "What do you think that window tint looks like? Is that too dark?" He said, "I got my measure right here in the car, I can check it for you. Come on over, we'll check it." He checked it right there in town. Also, years before that, there's two officers walking down the street side by side. I didn't know them. I walked up and introduced myself with a handshake and a shoulder hug. I said, "Man," I said, "What are you guys doing? Just walking down the street?" He said, "Well," he said, "we're new here." One of the police was, and he said, "We figured this might be the best way to get to know the people is just to be on foot, walking around, talking to people like you said." I've had numerous experiences with past officers like that. Where do they go? Why can't we keep them? I don't know if it has to do with salary or what, but when we get people like that, we got to keep people like that. We get people in here who are just looking to make the next move. I know that some of that training that they exhibited the other night probably comes from our academy and they probably need that. They might need that one day here too. It might happen. It might happen, but we don't need it on a daily basis. There was no need for it that night. That needs to be kept in the back pocket. And we do need people who are peace officers and not police officers. That is a beautiful point. And I'm just, I'm going to wrap it up like this because I'm an old Deadhead too and I remember being at a Grateful Dead show one time. And it was toward the end and they were running out of places to play and some guy got all goofy on acid or something, got up on top of the end of the theater, was dancing around naked. No kidding, no kidding. And I took it upon myself to be the ambassador for the Deadheads. And I walked up to a sheriff, not security, a sheriff that was there. And I said, "I'm sorry, man, we're not all like that." He said, "I know that." He said, "We're all here because we want to be here. Our sergeant took the night off, he's in the third row." He said, "We'll get him now, we'll take care of it, it's okay." Nobody, nobody hears the enemy, brother. We're all here because we want to be here. I want the policemen who work this town to be here because they want to be here, not because it's a job. If they can do that, ask the best. If they can, we can ask people, "Why can't we do it here this evening? We can do this."
Thank you, Scott.
Hi, my name is Molly Lundby. But I wanted to bring up a couple other names right now. Alfred, Andrew, Dennis Jr., Lori, Chrissy, Johnny. These are all the names of children that attended high school in Yellow Springs with me whose parents were police officers. Having that connection to your community is so very important. We become people, not, not things that need to be contained. And it has become overly evident in the last few years that that's what's really lacking. And I understand the difficulty to require that, but I want to reinforce what Karen Arner said earlier that we need to come up with a form of incentive to get that happening. We need our, our community to be involved in policing and the policing to be involved with our community and that starts by driving by. There are a few police officers, Brian Carlson is amazing, he comes into the show looking. I want to see more of that. I want to know the names like I used to know the names. I don't anymore. So I just want to share that with you and hopefully you'll take that into your consideration when making new moves for our officers that will hopefully be needed.
Thanks, Molly.
Hi, my name is Ian McDonald, a professor at Williamsburg University, and my mother moved here in nineteen eighty-five. And one of the things I heard a lot on New Year's was, "I've never seen anything like this before." And I said the same thing, certainly in the context of New Year's, but I had seen something like it before in two thousand thirteen when the town was once again filled with cars of police departments that did not belong to Yellow Springs, involved in what now can only really be called a multi-jurisdictional assassination, what town member it is on the home. And that's, that's what concerned me the most about this was the speed and the aggressivity of multiple other departments, the presence of which cannot help but lower the Yellow Springs Police Department's control over the situation. We know these officers do not patrol these streets, they may not like the people who live in these streets. They're brought in solely to provide muscle and this consistent necessity from the police department that seems now to always be calling out to exercise its ability to produce superior force is not something that I had seen before in two thousand thirteen, at least not as common as it seems to be happening today. I understand that there might be some sort of legal expectations that alternate units are drawn into police matters like this, but I think that needs to stop. And one of the reasons that I found it most disturbing was that there were high-profile town members in the crowd attempting to speak with police that refused to hear them out, refused to interact with them. You may say, "Maybe they didn't know who they were." Well, how can they be Yellow Springs Police Department and not know who owns the emporium? So I think it's important, so many of the things, especially the case in two thousand thirteen, if there had been an allowance for patience and communication, it very likely would have ended differently. But there was a rush to make it clear that the police were in charge and it caused the death of a person that instance and the tasing of an innocent person in this instance. And I think it's high time we begin to think about the ways in which the police communicate with members of this community to control situations like this and not immediately reach out to prove superior force by bringing in units from outside the city problem. Thank you.
Can you say that one more time?
Stephen McQueen. Sorry, my name is Stephen McQueen and as you guys know, I've been working with Chief L from day one. I was actually a little upset to hear you resign, only because I had been working with him so much that I do know that his whole point was to let the officers who were here help him find out what is needed here. And so I wanted to be, I wanted to, I wanted to be clear that we have officers here now that are really the problem, that are getting a ton of complaints and that we keep having what we haven't had a chief stay here for longer than a few years, for the last ten years. So there's, there hasn't been someone who's just like, "This is how it goes here in Yellow Springs and this is what we do." Because we haven't had a chief like that in so long, we have, we have officers here that get complaints constantly and nothing's ever done. By the fact they're basically untouchable. And what happened on New Year's Eve is clear proof that here it is the chief can say, "I don't really know who really gave that call." I normally just leave it to them and people, they've been working here for a while, they should definitely have known about the New Year's Eve ball drop. There is no excuse for what happened. I want these officers, I'm sure a lot of people want the officers who were a part of this to deal with this like this is something where, I want the chief, I want them all to have the answer to why this happened. I was there, I witnessed it. And everyone to feel, to feel like that here in Yellow Springs and to be moved by a car with lights burning and them turning the signals on. I haven't experienced stuff like that since the great in Philly, where they did, where they had to do that because it's a big college party. But that's what it felt like, that's how it felt being removed like that while people were just celebrating and enjoying themselves. But I really want to make it clear that these officers need to, they need to answer to us. I really want to know exactly why they felt something like this could be done. Sometimes they go, "It's too, it's too complicated." The only complaints I really do have about the chief are the fact that he hired somebody who's already been fired and another one who's already used a taser. What, what's with the hiring processes? How is this happening? Why, what are we going to do about this? Is the next chief going to take control and say, "All right, you guys cannot do this, you cannot do this." I just wanted, if we're going to have to get a new chief, get a chief who is actually going to take control of this from the perception of Yellow Springs, perspective of Yellow Springs.
We have thirty more minutes and there are nine people in line, so I'm going to ask that no one else join the queue. After the council speaks, we'll open the queue back up, okay?
Thank you, I'll be, just working, yeah. I'll be quick. First, I want to tell a related incident that illustrates two things. Number one, this is not a new problem.
Excuse me, can you state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Jim Zander, Z E A K N E R. This is not, this is not a new problem. A number of years ago, my husband's granddaughter came up to live with us in the fourth grade. And we noticed that when she first came here, from Cincinnati, when she saw police cars, she would hide. And we thought that was a matter of some concern. Well, after a couple of years, saying hello to Chief Brody in the morning, after going to school with Officer Meisner's daughter, that went away. And then one night, coming home from a Girl Scout meeting and Carl was in the car following her, the school, the Girl Scout leader was pulled over for an expired license, bad tailway, pulled into her driveway and a police guard in and gave her, "Holy hell! What the hell is wrong with you?" And in front of her daughter, well, Carl was there with his granddaughter in the car and she smirks. Well, what happened to those two years between fourth grade and sixth grade? That five minutes destroyed it. So this isn't new. Second point, I want to speak briefly to the issue of residency. Why is residency important? Because what do we want the police to do? I want the police to be the adult in the room. And I've been in an instance where I needed an adult in the room. We ran a bar the last night. We got into a fight with a customer because he wouldn't pay to cover. And we were screaming and hollering and we called the police. And Nipper and Wink show up and we explain it. And Nipper says to us, "Okay, we can throw them out, you've got the right to do that." But is that what you really want to happen? And we went, "God, no." And we all fall and drunk in embraces and say, "No, well." So that's, so good policing happens here. It can be done. But secondly, about the issue of residency, why is residency important? It is one thing to be a policeman in a community. It is another thing when that community is your workspace. And the community is your office. When a community is, I've lost the word I was looking for, but when a community is, something gets in the way of your job. You came here, you come here to do a job. Community people get in the way. And what you're trying to do is deal in your workspace, in your office, in the place where you work. And that's what's happening. So it's okay to push somebody out of the way if they're messing up your workspace, if they're messing up your job. It's not okay if you're a member of the community and you're going to be a member of the community tomorrow and you're going to have to all live together.
Thank you, John.
Hello, my name is Sayer Hudson, I'm 15 and I've been here all my life. I've had a few small encounters with the police, both negative and positive, and I've never really seen a huge problem with them, but this year at New Year's, when everything was going down and everyone was crowded up on this guy who I guess was on the ground and had gotten tased, the police were, they were acting pretty immature about it. I think everyone could have handled it a lot better, including residents, but the force that the police used was really unnecessary and horrible. Honestly, in my opinion, I think that the person who shot the taser should be confronted and punished. That night, I actually took a look around where it all happened to see if I could find anything and I did. I have the part of the taser that was shot. So my dad, we were going to turn it in and he said, we don't want any weird funding business going on, we were to turn this in because this is against the police. And it's pretty easy to get rid of something like this and cover it up and cover up their own mistakes, which is something that happens a lot.
Let's let it continue.
Everything that happened was really unnecessary and could easily be avoided. And afterwards, when everyone was calm again, they brought in the sheriffs, the sheriff scared little dog out of the car. And it was ridiculous. I was standing on the sidewalk laughing because they were all standing in the street trying to get us out, trying to look tough and scare us. And they ended up leaving anyway shortly afterwards, after bringing in the sheriff and the dogs and all that. Everything was just really unnecessary and could very easily be prevented from here on out.
My name is Bob Claude. I've stayed here in town 44 years, partly because I thought I left this town to the time. I've seen riots, I've seen confrontations. And I was in the crowd when it went down. I was circling around, the crowd was packed so tightly, it was hard to weave your way through. And I was on the periphery when the cars started coming through. My first thought, like everybody else, seemed to be, what's going on? What's the event? What? I had to see the squad right behind me. Is somebody hurt? No, no squad. They were sitting there, lights and sirens screaming. As far as I could tell, they were all in this, there was no squad. Okay, has there been, has there been a theft somewhere? Did somebody take, take the money from the little girl? Nobody got out of the car. At that point, I realized, this is not good. And I worked my way around the crowd and started back down Xena going south to get the hell out of there. And I got a spur as the speedway and realized this is not responsible. I was ashamed. I started back. And about that point, I saw three more cruisers come up Xena Avenue, very close together, had a higher rate of speed. I couldn't judge his speed, it's a hell of a lot more than speed limit. No sheriff, just lights. When the cars came in, obviously, they were no longer blocking 68. That's a state road. The crowd was not protected. And these cars coming in at high speed, it was no point. From where I was standing, I couldn't even hear the crowd. At one point, I heard chant of, police go home. That's the loudest thing I've heard. Okay? Here we attack with those cruisers. I saw two, I forget, I lost count, two or three, obviously unmarked cars with lights on the roof, guns screaming down the street. Now, it went till afterwards and I started thinking, wait a minute, I understand mutual support, mutual aid. When did they put the call on? How did they get there so quick? What's this waiting? They came, they took this, they came, they're going, even when it's been a ticket. What the hell is going on? I don't think that the chain falling in the sort of enough. I want answers for most of the officers who showed incredible insensitivity and the lawyer was in the packet, showed clearly that the chief left it to their decision, how many were it? And so it shouldn't go on more than, more than past 45 minutes past midnight. It didn't make sense, none. That's right.
Thank you, Paula.
My name is Moyer Lachlan. Quiet, please. My name is Moyer Lachlan. I've lived here for 32 years and for most of those years have been a participant in the New Year's Eve celebrations with my family, friends, kids, et cetera. And I don't need to repeat how joyous celebration was ruined, like so many other people have said. But what I want to say is that, number one, I'm really distressed that this was spun by local news organizations as the result of aggressive and illegal behavior on the part of some young hooligan, which those of us who were there celebrated. And as we know, not to be true. Number one, it's an insult to his reputation and his personal freedom, as far as I know, he's been arrested. And also, an insult to our intelligence as a community, since we were there and saw the whole thing happen. Number two, I, like everyone else, would like to know why it was necessary to call in the cavalry. This happened as numerous other people have mentioned, at least once before, with very bad consequences. And one thing that really disturbs me is that these people who come in, no matter how fast they came in or whatever, they are from outside the area and actually they were from a lot more places than the three that someone mentioned. I mean, I looked at all the cars as they were coming in and it was from many municipalities and also including the Green County Sheriff. And these people don't know us. All they know of us is what they heard from that incident that involved the SWAT teams and what they read about in the newspaper and, and, you know, misinformation that's bandied about by all kinds of people outside of town, which mischaracterizes us as a community. With the result that when these law enforcement agencies come to town, they have this idea in their heads that Yellow Springs is a hotbed of drug crazed hippies who are always looking for any reason and no reason at all to demonstrate and create havoc, et cetera. So they're coming to town looking to crack some heads. And that was pretty obvious on the faces of some of those officers. Luckily, one of the people that was there as a police officer was Dennis Nipper Jr., who, by cool head, interacted with a lot of the villagers and the other policemen and was able to diffuse the situation. But it could have been a lot worse. So not only is this an insult to us as a community, but it also is a potential danger to our safety, which is exactly the opposite of what our police officers are here for.
My name is Terrick Ober. I just want to bring a little different perspective to what has been said almost the entire night. And it's one of, a bit of gratitude for the seven-plus generations that have been in this town before. I've been here two years. I've got no generational background here. My wife and I brought our two young kids here because of what this town built and the values that you created and the community you created. It's because, it's the kind of place we want to live. It's the kind of place we want our kids to grow up in. And it is evident by the character of the people speaking here tonight why we made that decision. And what makes me so damn mad and sad, I mean seriously sad near tears, is that this incident is so, it is the antithesis of why we moved here. And frankly, it's the antithesis of what you've built over the last hundred-plus years in this town. And I think everybody here understands that. I honestly think, I don't know what to think, I was flabbergasted. I took my kids to their first ever, not first ever ball drop, the first time either of my kids stayed up till midnight, it was that night. So I've got 30 years ball drops. They've got one and thank God we left at 12:05. We didn't see a damn thing. And I'm awfully, awfully happy we did. I'm glad many of you were there to witness it so you could talk tonight. I'm really glad I wasn't so my kids didn't see it. But I'm also really hopeful, I'm hopeful this is an opportunity for all of you and for me to be a part of something that's truly Yellow Springs. Let's revolutionize what policing should be, what policing used to be. That's Yellow Springs.
Hello, my name is Sandy Bice and I'm like a fellow gentleman, have only lived here a short time, I've only actually lived in the village about three years. And my experience with the police department has been positive. Once I was attacked in the Glen by a dog, they were quick to respond. And then just again, on October 31st, Halloween, I had someone come to my door, knocking on it. It was a very large male wanting money. And which is not, you know, for a female that lives by herself, that's not a comfortable feeling. I teach martial arts for a living, so I have a great respect for law, order, and authority. But what's decisive this person, I wanted someone else to take care of it. My point is that when, I was also there at the ball drop, it was an epic fail. And also by being a teacher, I respect and appreciate and value communication, which was lacking. My point is, police officers are human, as was stated earlier, and they're going to make mistakes. But if we don't give them the consistent financial, physical, mental, spiritual, and emotional support that they need on a consistent basis, we can fire and we can rehire and we will get consistent results. Repetition is the mother of skill and what we put into them is what we're going to get back. So if we do not give them consistent input on what we want on a regular, weekly, daily, monthly basis, we're going to get the same result. So we have to put in what we want to get out. And if I'm hearing from everyone correctly, we want someone that is reflective of our hope that we have here. Thank you, John.
My name is Jay Pan, P A N, Wright, R I C H. I'm a volunteer paramedic here, I've been 20 years, my wife is a business owner downtown and a campus nurse in the Antioch College. The first point I'd like to make is I took an active role in the community meetings to come up with lists, just like those that were on board, qualities and priorities that we wanted in our next police team. And I just have to share that, in my opinion, Dave Hale was at the bottom of the list so far as matching his qualities. I know he was the interim chief and he developed professional relationships with people on, you know, management of the village and I think that that weighed way too heavily. And I think that all the hours that villagers spent coming up with our qualities and what was important to us was set aside. I mean, the captain from Xena lives on Trayline Road, he's local, he's an instructor of the non-violent confrontation course that we were putting in our officer crew. And Chief Hale never felt the need to take that course before he came here. So I think the priorities of those two men were very, very different. I think Dave Meister was set aside way, way too. We had a long history of compassion and kindness to our villagers in service and he should have been much more strongly considered. I know there is an illusion that just because someone is from over there, that they automatically have a magic wand and they're better than the people that we know. We knew Dave's faults, but we didn't know any of Dave Hale's faults. All we knew was what he presented. And so I urge, as a manager who makes the ultimate decision, to listen to the villagers' qualities and what we want, a little more strong is strong. I'd like to read, Laura Perlis made the point that because of the aggressive and disrespectful behavior, that that's what sparked the alleged disorderly behavior of our citizen who was tased and arrested David. And I'd like to read a passage from the Ohio Revised Code, section 4513.21. Warning devices, sirens, and horns on every emergency vehicle shall be equipped with sirens capable of emitting sound audible under normal atmospheric conditions from distance if not less than 500 feet and approved by the Director of Highway Safety. Such equipment shall not be used except when such vehicle is operating in response to an emergency call or is in the immediate pursuit of an actual or suspected violator of the law. Those are the only two times that an emergency vehicle can use a siren. So my point is that Laura's point that respectful and aggressive behavior, it was illegal, unlawful behavior. If it weren't for that, there would have been disorderly conduct. The last quick, quick point I want to make is every officer on our department, everyone, needs to be mandated to watch the video of this gathering tonight. People spoke from their hearts, they spoke of their fears, they speak of their fears of their children, being afraid of the police, and the good officers should be crying when they hear that. And the ones who won't listen or do it in protest need to be finding the door.
My name's Amy Mariana and I've been a resident of Yellow Springs, I think, most of the last 32 years. I was at the ball drop with my two teenage kids and I just want to say thank you, first of all, to those people who stood up so bravely. Not only for your bravery, but also for modeling for our community and for my children and our community's children, what passive resistance looks like and what good diffusion of a terrible situation looks like. So I think that was. I also just want to add my support to the call for an independent committee of inquiry to support the investigation, not only of the events of New Year's Eve. to support the investigation, not only of the events of New Year's Eve, but also the policies, the processes, the decisions, and the infrastructure that created the situation and the events of New Year's Eve. I think an independent committee could help us understand more fully all of the different things that went into creating that situation. And I would also like to add my support to the call that are all charges related to this incident.
And once again, my name is Sandy King. I got nervous enough that I left the microphone before I really finished what I wanted to say. But Pan kind of finished part of what I wanted to say, what has to do with nonviolent communication. And I've been studying this book called Nonviolent Communication by Marcel Rosenberg. And he talks about feelings and unmet needs. And everyone has feelings and needs, and whether they're met in a good way or whether they're unmet is the question. And we all have those needs. And there's not probably anyone that I know in this room, I know I'm not guiltless and that I haven't done things in my life that I'm deeply ashamed of. Deeply ashamed of. And to think that I'm inside of a box and I can't get out and I can't see myself in any other way is very difficult. And so what I propose here is that we have started the process of mourning here. This is a whole nascent, irocore thing that we're doing right here, right now. We are mourning what has happened. We need to mourn that with the people who perpetrated the harm. That's number one. And number two, in order to heal it, we need to figure out what were the unmet needs that these people obviously didn't get their needs met. We didn't get our needs met. We know what we don't want, and we can continue to list those things that we don't want. But I instead say, let's start making a list, like Pan said, of what we do want, and we, the people, can make up what we want to be protected for by our peace officers. Make that list, and have any officer that decides they want to work for this town to sign a contract with its villagers.
We heard some great comments. I really appreciate the honesty, the passion that you all spoke. We were listening, we were taking notes. We have film, so we have a lot of information. We have the notes that were taken, the questions and points that were made. What I definitely learned tonight is that there are a lot of unanswered questions. There were a few things that I thought we were going to be able to answer tonight, but because of some of the comments and observations that were made by the folks here, I would rather us not at this point answer questions because I don't, I don't want to give you wrong information. I feel that we, that the village has been responsible for potentially wrong information going out there already. I don't want more to continue to go out. So please understand that not answering questions is to get it right and not to hide anything from you. We're going to be working on that. We actually have a couple of orders of business that we have to talk about. I guess what I'm going to do is just, we will end with council comments, but I want to talk to council, I want to ask council if we definitely want to have this January 30th meeting. So that's one, one order of business. We'll have a motion to do that. We also have a motion related to, just to cover the situation, related to independent legal counsel that we need to address. So those are two things. I guess I just want to get the pulse of council on how else they want to move forward. Do we have citizens who would still like to speak, knowing that in a couple of weeks we will have another meeting?
Yes.
So I see that potentially, let's, let's talk among ourselves, let's decide where we're going to go next. We may have another half hour, I'd say maybe 15 minutes of comments, looks like to me. So council, we want to hear more comments now? I personally think we should comment at this point, and then if the citizens, I just think if people get tired, we before we comment, that may not be so satisfying to find people because they want to hear from their elected representatives. Want me to start? Sure. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Tida Pimpling. I am one of your elected rooms' representatives. And it is great that everyone's here. I'm really glad. If we're going to be hopeful about revolutionizing our policing, we are going to need your help. I just want to say, I think we have a great debt to the Black Lives Matter movement, the fact that society now realizes, our society realizes, that civilian control of police is what democratic societies insist upon, otherwise you have a police state. I say that not as saying, you know, as just trying to insult police. The police, a good police officers and police departments are very essential also to a democratic society. But I want to say it because in 2008, when our police department decided that they wanted tasers, and I was on the council at that time, and I said, we need to have a discussion. It might be a good idea, but we need to, tasers are potentially deadly weapons, and they should only be used when there is an imminent danger. And at that time, there was not much support for the idea that the elected representatives should have much say about the police department, that it was generally believed in our whole country, I think, that police departments, they're the experts on policing. What do you know about it as an elected official? So things have changed. They've changed a lot. And that this incident, you know, brings out so many of us, I think in part we have to give credit to the questions that have been raised by black activists, black youth primarily, who have said, we will no longer be treated this way in our society, and we will be treated with respect. We will not be harassed by police. In terms of the New Year's Eve night, I want to start by doing what many have done here, which is to thank citizens who played a leadership role in keeping people safe and deescalating a dangerous situation. I saw, I've seen the tapes, I did go down after the events occurred and I got a phone call. I also want to thank our own Mary Ann McQueen, who played an excellent role. What the actions of our citizens and our village council members showed is that keeping the village and villagers safe, even when police officers are being wise and playing a positive role, is a responsibility of all of us. On New Year's Eve night, these wise citizens can be seen on the videos, deescalating a situation in which the police officers appear to be provocative, harsh, authoritarian, with ear-splitting sirens screaming. The situation was so escalated, but for the actions of these people, there could have been many injuries. My son called me on the phone, saying, you need to get down here, it's your job to get down here. But he said, we can't leave because if we leave, somebody's going to get hurt. The incident did result in injuries. There was an injured police officer, and it resulted in an injury to a young black man who grew up in Yellow Springs, who is a very decent, hardworking person. I've known him since he was a child, who has two children, he cares for his younger brother, and he has been charged with a felony. Village government, your democratic elected representatives, with your help, we need to find a way to help David Carlton Vining. I do want to say that the village cannot directly reduce his charges. They are now in the hands of the Greene County Prosecutor, so we're going to have to find other ways to be helpful. I want to comment on tasers. As I said, best practices, according to the American Civil Liberties Union, is that these are potentially lethal weapons. They are only used in the case of imminent threat. We need to be looking at our policies, we need to be looking at that policy. I think we need to get this right because someone could truly have been hurt, somebody, and that was to my mind, and inappropriate, appeared to be, I should say, you know, a very concerning use. In terms of next steps, we're talking about an independent committee, citizens committee. I want to point out a couple of things. Last year, well, 2015, council made the decision to get the village out of the ACE Task Force, and in 2016, we decided, and I think the council's been very responsive, to the idea that we want a police department that, that are truly public servants to our villagers and that the village can be proud of. We created a justice system task force last spring. Over the summer, we interviewed people who were interested in being on it, and we began meeting this fall. We've only had three meetings. I think because of this incident, the committee needs to consider a way to respond more quickly to some of the concerns that have come from this incident. But I don't think it makes sense to have a committee that's independent of a committee that we just started. And just to say that some of the goals of the committee and the resolution that formed it is to strengthen, and I think we need to think in terms of revolutionizing our policing, to strengthen our police department and our mayor's court so that, so that we will have increased public understanding of the police, and to strengthen the public trust in the village's justice system across race, age, and income groups. Another part of what the resolution says is that we want new, we want to strengthen our mayor's court, to use, we want to think about how do we use restorative justice practices in our mayor's court. And also looking at new developed best practice and policing practice that address institutional racism, that ameliorate the disparate impact of the justice system practices on the court, to find alternative approaches to direct control and to, well, there's several things here. I think I'll just stop there. So I guess, I guess I want to stop there, and I appreciate your listening. Thank you.
We have decided to let Mary Ann speak last because she was very intimately involved in the whole situation, so I'm speaking ahead of her. As a councilperson, I feel that, number one, I've let you down as your representative. As a council member, at least I should know what the proper procedures are when we schedule stuff, and not assume that just because an event has taken place year after year, that all the proper procedures were followed. So for that, I have to apologize. I spent two days with the chief reviewing the video of the events. I was not there, so all I had was the video to look at. And as we all know, you can look at a hundred videos, and a decision will come out that you do not believe. But I do believe, and in this case, once we do a full investigation, that facts will come out and those that are responsible will receive what is allowed by the law in our I've been on council for six years. After listening to what I heard this evening, I do have to question, do I have the ability to try to provide to the citizens here in Yellow Springs what they need in terms of what is now as proper police training, education, hiring? I've been involved with too many hirings of chiefs with the input and the help of villagers, of professionals. Does not appear that we've done it right. I've been in many interviews with potential police officers. There is that we might have some problems in who we hire. But I do want everyone to know, we are citizens and we are community members, just like the rest of them. We chose to set up here. You chose us to set up here. We accepted that responsibility, and when there's a feeling, a consensus, that we aren't making up to that responsibility, maybe we should step down. So I'm going to be spending the next few weeks trying to determine, do I have the capabilities to continue to be your representative and make decisions for you folks as council, as a council member? And also, do I feel I have the energy to seek reelection or to continue at the council? I don't know about the rest of them, but, you know, this incident that happened over the weekend, it takes a toll on our officers, it takes a toll on our citizens, but it also takes a heavy toll on us that were elected to represent and to try to serve you folks. So that's what I'm going to look at. Now, if I decide to stay, I see a crowded room, a lot of people that have a lot of energy, but when we ask for volunteers to bring that energy forward, we get very few. And we can't do it by ourselves. I've been on council for almost six years, and I can probably count on my hand the times that someone has called me and given me some suggestions or advice, and it's mainly coming from you, no? But seriously, you elected me to serve and try to serve you as the best I can, if I feel that I can continue to do that. I do have to say, after spending two days talking with the chief, I knew what he was going to do. I knew what he was going to do. Because I felt that he was a man of integrity. He wasn't going to kick the ball down the road. He was going to stand up and take responsibility. Because as a leader, if your folks do not follow what you give them, then you know it's time to step down. Because you have lost that ability to lead. I wish the chief well and so forth. But as we all know, it's going to be real tough to find that individual that we would like to have within the village. And if we do find that individual, I'm hoping that the support and the outpour that we got tonight will be that same support and outpour that we get our new chief and especially to the good officers that we have here.
So first of all, as I did on Facebook, and this relates to taking responsibility, I think it's important in person, on behalf of the village, to deeply apologize for what happened on New Year's Eve. It's terrible. And I think most of you, if you've followed about why I came onto council, I think you know that I do not like emotions to color my decisions. But I got to be honest and excuse the language, but I am incredibly pissed off. I can't believe that, as a council, we have prioritized the local policing. And we have put so much effort into this. And I don't understand how we got to this. And so I want to reiterate a couple of things that we have done. Judith has mentioned a few things, such as the fact that, you know, we now have the justice system task force. But prior to that, we had several community conversations from the Human Relations Commission that were led. We captured really important values. And we put forth a local policing vision that highlighted four things, which I'll mention in case you didn't see it, that we want a police force that's safety-centered, support-oriented, citizen-focused, and locally-minded. And I strongly believe that this council, our commissions, and many others have tried to enact this. And so it just shocks me that this happened. Related to that, I think that we have to admit, and it wasn't really emphasized tonight, that part of the problem is the system that exists. And that has to do with the terrible training that police officers get right now. It has to do with the fact that there aren't some of these things ingrained into that system. And it's a very hard thing to undo. And as all the people here know, this is not something that just started since I've been on council or two years ago. We have talked about, at the meeting yesterday, problems that happened in 1992, lettered in 1995 that reiterated the same problems that we're seeing today. So there's a lot of work to be done. And that's why I want to emphasize what Judith said as far as the need for help. In particular, one thing that is compelling to me is support with recruitment. I love the idea of having a local peace officer team. And I would love to see how we could make that happen. But I think we also have to admit that because we don't have all these people knocking on our doors that live here right now, again, how do we incentivize that? But also Gavin mentioned to me that he thinks that he has some experience that could help with looking at officers currently in other departments that would see this as an opportunity. Because I do believe we want to be a model community. And this is something we've been talking about, really, since I've been on council. So with that, I agree that we need to have better hiring. We need to have better supervision. We need lots of support. And at the end of the day, it comes down to solid leadership. And that's why I'm committed, as I have been for the last two years, to seeing that happen. So I look forward to all your support.
With my failing voice, I'm not going to say a lot. I appreciate everything that every council member has said. I agree with it. The training is absolutely critical. In a conversation I had with Fire Chief Colin Altman, one of the things he said that they do with the township is when their folks go out and train, then they come back into the fire department and talk about how that training works locally. Because I think, you know, I think the major training, I think, is important. I think folks have to understand how to be trained as a police officer. But that training doesn't always work here. And I think that that's where we failed. We haven't brought it back to what Yellow Springs values are. And like Brian, I thought we were clear. You know, we've kind of set up these processes. We set up a policy. We set up local policing. We've got the justice system task forces in process. We're working with HRC. I felt that we had the processes in place. I felt that we went through a good process in the hiring. And I was clearly wrong. I will take responsibility that I was wrong. I wasn't listening. I, well, I've had my eyes open today through this past year. Through this past year. And I'm sorry. And I'm sorry for what happened. I'm sorry for what happened at the event at the New Year's Eve ball drop. I wasn't there because of my voice, because of my cold. And I apologize for that. I would have wanted to experience it with you because I want to experience what, the horror that you all lived through. I'm sorry. I'm sorry that it happened. We will do everything in our power that nothing like that ever happens again. We will be working with our staff and council to ensure that we put together and create a department of policies, procedures that reflect the values of this community and what this community wants. And I've got a year to do that. And I will work throughout that year to do that.
I was the only council member who was actually at the ball drop. Brian was in the little arc. And so after the next day, I wrote a letter to council, which I think would be a public record, not public record, which I entitled, "The New Year Got Off to a Bang. Police Tactics Gone Arise." So I'm just going to read two sentences from that and then I'll say a little more. "The negative turn of events last night was caused by the inappropriateness of police action." And then the last sentence is, "What we need is a detailed plan to ensure that all our officers learn to respectfully treat peacefully congregated citizens in a way that contributes to the sense of community rather than engenders fear and antagonism." As a member of village council, in really the thick of the ball drop, I was very, I really wasn't clear how to act. I was not the chief of police. I did not have control. I did not have control over the police at all. I did interact two times with the officer who I have to assume was the leader of what happened, though I'm not sure of that. And I was directly, well, right by his car when the incident happened with David Carlson. Therefore, one, I will probably be called to testify. And I do not want in any way to jeopardize his case. But also, I am being charged as well with two misdemeanors. So I have lived in Yellow Springs since my twenties. And I have to say that 2016, well, that would have actually been this year, has been the first time, and Tony noted this, that I have had any kind of interactions like this with the police. The first happened earlier with a family member with our local police and then at the ball drop. So as a white woman and an older white woman, I think probably most of, and I see a number of us out here, most of us probably, most of us older white women probably have pretty positive, if any, experiences with the police. Now, I haven't always been this old. Actually, I was fairly young when I came here. But I always have been white and always been female. So in the past, you know, I heard through mostly secondhand things that had happened mostly with young people and people of color. But this year, well, I think probably many of us were at the event, so we all got to experience it, as unfortunate as that has been for starting 2017. So that's all that I can say.
Is the council willing to hear a few more people testimony? All right, if you'd like to speak, please come back to the podium. And we will recognize you in your order of appearance. Let's take just a moment to let the people that are leaving do so.
We want to thank those who are leaving. If you could still quickly continue with the questions of those that are remaining. Thank you. Quickly and quietly, please. Quietly, please. Thank you. Thank you. Laura?
My name is Warren Earlis. And I represent David Carlson. He was charged today with obstructing official business, which is a felony. It's an F5. He was also charged with petty theft of a taser. So I would ask, and I'm grateful that Ms. Sarah brought that taser here. I would ask that Yellow Springs PD, the chief, or somebody who's in charge, to please call the prosecutor and let them know that that lost and found item has been found. I would ask the police also to refrain from any more charges until a senior officer can review them. I think that these charges are just going down there without review. I think that senior, experienced guys could see that people like Mary Ann, for example, were not intending to obstruct business, but were trying to calm the situation. I just think that there needs to be some review before these charges go downtown. I would ask the police also to refrain from any more charges until a senior officer can review them. I think that these charges are just going down there without review. I think that senior, experienced guys could see that people like Mary Ann, for example, were not intending to obstruct business, but were trying to calm the situation. I just think that there needs to be some review before these charges go downtown. I think David, is David here? David was here and he heard your support. And please continue to support him. Don't ask him what happened. He can't make statements. I told him that. But please express your support. Thank you very much.
My name is John Cordes.
Could you repeat your name again, please?
My name is John Cordes. I went to school here at Wright State University for electrical engineering. I've been doing some electrical engineering work for another town. Yeah, YSI. I was here for just six months. But I quit and pursued my photography career. Anyways, living here in Yellow Springs for the past three years has been a dream. I've been living his dream. If anybody has ever read any of Arthur Morgan's books, Lusky Morgan wrote a book about his life. And I encourage everybody to read his writings about community. He has very good values and he was a very smart man. And he wasn't rich his whole life. He got a very hard life. He's a very good man to look at, to look up to. And this is a utopian world compared to other cities and towns that I've been to. And it's just an amazing day here. And just this happening, that has happened there with him, shows us that we still have a very strong community and some beautiful people caring for and loving for each other. And we just need to keep that up. And instead of letting the world get an example and sink, we see all kinds of things happen in the world. And I've been out in Oakland and San Francisco and all that stuff. All the shootings and everything that happened out there. What if they didn't have a taser? You know? What if it would have escalated? I think they handled it very well. And so did the citizens. I saw people with their hands up. And they were peacefully trying to stop the situation. It could have escalated into something else. I'm very impressed with everybody and how they've acted. And how we're back here. We've come together as a community to resolve this. And, you know, a community needs to be strengthened, of course. It's already so strong. Look in the past, how Yellow Springs has changed the world with their thing, with Danny up at university, products that have been in space. And just open our eyes and realize that we are living in a world, in a place where we can change the world outside. And probably our towns around us, but the whole world. Like, it doesn't seem that way. But, you know, Cincinnati, I read a story where they were writing about the hippies up here in Yellow Springs and how it's so beautiful. And like, whatever, it was so beautiful two years ago. I remember the last two springs were just amazing, living here and being with everybody. And it's just been almost heavenly. And I got to say something, I'll finish this off. Something about Oakland told me, we can create our own hell or we can create our own heaven. And, you know, we've got something really awesome here in this town and this place. And it's just, it's been a spiritual experience to me. And a man of science that I am, I look to Adams and all this stuff being a spiritual experience. And just all this coming together and all this love, awesome. We need to keep that. Thank you.
My name is Chrissy Cruz. And I just have a couple of things I want to say. First of all, I really appreciate the apologies and the patrician that I assume from the councilmembers. And I really did feel like it was appropriate for Chief Dale to step down. As a person, I liked him, but I don't think that he was working as our police chief. And I will come back to the January 30th meeting. But I wanted to make sure that you all were to think about something that first came to my mind when this event happened. We put in a lot of time during meeting forums, meetings, surveys. And I was deeply entrenched in all of that. So I know what the people said and what everybody said they wanted. And when you picked this face, Chief, I went down the list and it seemed to me like he had absolutely the opposite quality of everything that the people had said that they wanted. this face chief, I went down the list, and it seemed to me like he had absolutely the opposite quality of everything that the people had said that they wanted, right down to keep, all right, we couldn't make it out of the town, so far away, and then now we find this recent officer we had, an hour's drive away, come on, okay, everybody says we want the officers in town, and they were getting farther and farther away. So, I want you guys to reflect on that, as our council, as our representatives, and you asked us to give you more input and give you more of our time, we'll respect the time and input that we already have given you. We did not give the chief what we had, what the people had said they wanted. And second of all, I want to be really firm, and that I don't want to see this incident become a reason to pass a whole bunch of new rules and regulations over New Year's Eve holiday. It was not broken, there's nothing that needs fixed here. You guys, the police department, base for your, leave it alone, don't pass all these rules.
One more time, a little louder. No?
Sule.
There you go.
There you are. So, clearly starting here off with a bang. I think now is kind of like a time to reassess what Yellow Springs is normally after, like, you know, the hippies, they're kind of like a, like a species that's dying out. So, Yellow Springs ain't gonna be the same forever, you all gotta realize that. And it's time to assess what it is so that we can get good officers to meet that criteria, if that makes sense. That's all I got to say.
Hi, I'm John Hembling. I'm a member of the Justice Systems Task Force, and the Justice Systems Task Force, of course, has not met since New Year's, so I'm gonna try to be very careful to say that I'm only speaking for myself and not for the task force. But our next meeting is on Tuesday, January 10th, at seven o'clock, in Council Chambers, and I would encourage anyone with interest in this issue to come to that meeting, I'm sure, I would be highly, I'm sure that something related to this event will be on the agenda. And there is no reason why the task force couldn't utilize non-task force members in helping to do work, to achieve its goal, which I should state is to review the police departments and the mayor's courts' current policies and practices, to research best practices in those areas, and to recommend changes. I was also present on New Year's Eve, and from my perspective, I was on the side of the celebration that the officers approached from. And from my perspective, it seemed immediately obvious that their actions would be escalatory and would not succeed in dispersing the crowd, and so, the fact that the officers didn't predict that, or change course, once, like, it seemed to be evident that that's the way that things were going, certainly seems like it would have implications beyond the news, as lots of other people have already said. So, anyway, thank you very much. Yes, so the date, once again, is Tuesday, January 10th, at 7:00 PM, in Council Chambers here at the Bryant Center.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Landon Rhodes, and I was at the ball drop until around 12:04, when me and my friends left. We were parked behind the library, and I'm essentially going off of what I believe Batman in the Hat said about how quickly the reinforcements came. They beat us to Dollar General when we left at 12:04, went to our parked car, and drove down Xenia Avenue towards Dollar General, because that's where my friend lived. We had to pull over because there were two cars speeding down Xenia Avenue, which seems like kind of an unnecessary risk when there's not a serious threat going on. And then we were like, what's going on, and turned around to go see it, and another one came behind us, and we had to pull over on our way back. So, just to put it in perspective, we left at 12:04, went to the library, got our car, and went down Xenia Avenue, and they were already on their way before we got to Dollar General. So, that's enough in my mind for there to be some suspicions of them being prepared to come, and I believe that the Yellow Springs officers were expecting their tactics not to work, as mentioned a second ago. And that being said, I think a lot more of it was planned than might appear from the outside. Not saying that they planned to tase anybody, but I am saying that I think they planned on bringing in reinforcements from the beginning, because I don't think there are too many people in general, whether they're in the police force or outside of it, who think that driving a police car with sirens on through a crowd is gonna be very effective. And if they thought that people are just gonna park and like leave, then maybe they shouldn't go to the police force, because that makes no sense. So, that's pretty much my thoughts, and I think a lot, pretty much, to wrap up what I'm saying, I think that they were on standby.
Hi, I'm Gary Saremsky. I've lived in town for just about thirty years, and I actually didn't make it downtown this particular New Year's, I made it a number of times, so I'm not correct with this, have the correct comment, not many of that. But talked to a lot of people, and a lot of video posted, this and that. I have a couple, two observations I want to make, that are, let's say, I want to look at something that is, put a positive spin on a couple of things. One is, I really want to compliment Village Council, the, the Association, and the Village Administration and Mediation Room, really, really recognizing what this community needed as a follow-up, and putting together this event the way it was put together, I think this is done in the right way. But then, the second thing I wanted to comment on, put a positive spin on this, we're all aware, people have talked over and over of the events that evening, and what happened, and I'm looking at it, and from looking at the video in particular, here you had hundreds and hundreds of people congregated in very, very close quarters, many of them probably quite intoxicated and all that, not anticipating anything happened, and a whole, a series of events occurred rather quickly that led to, almost led to a severe confrontation. There was a lot of elements that were escalating the situation, and a number of individual citizens took the initiative, had a sense of mind, to step in at their own risk, and effectively de-escalate the situation, because beyond some initial skirmishes, even though more came in, the dogs came in and all that, it could have gotten ugly, and it didn't. So, I just wanted to say how much I appreciate, and this is, maybe what I really want to say is, I'm not surprised by that, because we live in a community in which people recognize and are willing to just step forward and do that sort of stuff. So, I just wanted to state that.
My name is Jessica Thomas. I'm a member of HRC, but I'm speaking as a private citizen. One of the things that has disturbed me is how the village council has said that they can no longer do anything about dropping the charges of that state in Carlson. I want to remind you that there is power that you have. You have the power to write, you have the power to make phone calls, you have the power to influence other people within these power structures. I think we can all admit that this arrest came after misconduct by the police, so I think that we also, as a village, as a council, and through our other structures that we have, outside or within Village Council, can provide support to his family, provide additional legal support while he's going through this battle. And I think that you have a duty to do that, as are elected officials.
I'm John Edwards. I have some things to say that don't directly address this particular issue, because I think enough has been said by many people here, that I was not at the New Year's Eve ball drop. I'm, I'm old, it's difficult for me to get around, and so I decided not to go. There is one thing I do want to say that does directly reflect on that, and that has to do with the use of red light and siren, and these police officers, as I understand, were not responding to an emergency. And as Jeff said, my buddy up there, we worked in the squad together for about ten years, that is illegal, and they need to be charged with the illegal use. The illegal use of emergency equipment, because that is not legal. The other thing I have to say, some of you may not like, is that I found our police chief, and I think it was good for him to step down, that he did take leadership in some incidences, which I had, with a police officer, which were inappropriate, and he addressed the issues, and the police officers, that particular police officer's attitude has changed as a result of his actions. So, he was not completely ineffective, but the police officers have to be willing to listen to their police chief, and I think that's a problem. Because you can say something, and say it over and over again, unless the person has the ability to hear that, it's not going to make a change. So, I think our police officers need to go through some really intensive, specific training, and show us that they understand what the difference is between policing and supporting our community in a proper way, in a non-violent way. And some of them will still come out with a gun pointing at you, because that's what they think they have to do. The other thing that, that I kind of wanted to say was, I've gone to council meetings for years, and there are many times when I am the only villager sitting in the chairs in the crowd. So, where are all of you? What is necessary to have input into our council? You are absolutely as responsible as the council members, to make yourselves known, not just on committees, but every single council meeting that's there, because there is always something that needs to be said. And if you don't feel like the council is doing what you want to do, then you've got your mouth shut. And the only thing you're doing is bitching behind their backs. That's all I have to say.
My back hurts, I just wanted to address some of the things that council members were saying. I'm glad you guys are admitting that you were wrong about this elected chief, and some of these policies we have about law enforcement and everything else, that's really great, great step forward, I really do appreciate it. That said, your solution is doing the same thing over again, right? So, you're moving back to sort of like, okay, well, we need better training, and these kinds of things. The issue is policing, right? Policing as a practice is about protection of private property and regulating public space, right? So, the police make sure that businesses have access to roads and those kinds of things, keep roads safe and those kinds of things. But they make sure that public space isn't being used for anything other than going to work, right, and going shopping, okay? So, if you want to seriously address these sorts of things, then we need to completely re-envision how we use public space, and we need to seriously address our complete focus on small business as the only end of our town, okay? It's not the only end of our town, we live here, this is a community, and we need to start addressing this that, seriously. Thank you.
I have a quick comment to make. It's ten minutes to ten. We're gonna close the queue with the people that are standing. Curious.
I would very quick, this is Amy Magnus, and one of the most important things that I've heard tonight, is someone talked about self-care. And it's obvious to me that, you know, we need self-care for our children, we need self-care for our citizens, but also for the council members, for their leadership, and it really sounds like the people that we need to address self-care with is our police officers. Is that these people went into this stage, this situation, it sounds like to me, with a high, in a high state of anxiety before this event even happened. And I want to know why. I want to know where this trust, why that's been damming up so much. We need to figure out, if they're, you know, in our hiring process, what we were talking about, is that we need to keep out reaching out to these people and building up, and building up a buffer of trust. And if we don't do that, we'll keep making these mistakes in hiring. That's what will cut, that's what will tell us on this down, and it comes down to, where it really is probably the process that we need to really do. Self-care, self-care, self-care.
Hello, my name's Justin Traugler. Lived here my whole life. At about eighteen, I decided I was gonna be an officer, and I started talking to local authorities, and gee, I was told I was making the wrong LAs. So, you kind of took that to heart, but maybe you know the stigma behind being a big white guy and the wrong LAs? Well, I had a couple of good incidents with Alfred Jones, great man. Never seen anything like this, but kind of always had this in the back of my head, it would happen. We live in a bubble, and it got hot. The rest of the world's problems are our problems. We're here to solve them, but not one person has the answer. I've heard a lot of people say, "Citizens, where were you?" Well, I like to stay at home. All right, that's where I've been. Eighth generation, I don't want to deal with this anymore. I don't think any of you are going to be here after a couple of years either, because we're not gonna let you be. This is our town, our police. All your positions are painful by us. You heard everybody in here, we're not happy. And it's not about each other, and it's not about you, it's about all of us. I'm not happy with myself when I'm coming down here, every month. So, that's gonna change, I'll see you next month.
Yes, I want to thank everyone for the chance to speak to you. I really appreciate it that you guys have all stood here, sat here for so long, listening to everybody. I think that what brought me back here is I realized I left out something that I had previously touched on, and please accept my apologies in advance, that this is a difficult subject for me to talk about, it's a very personal issue. But one thing that I've realized is, it's not my story alone, it's your story. It's your story. This is your story. 1996, Steve Alexander raped me and several other people in this community, young boys. He was working for the DEA. He claimed, I don't know, he was employed by the Yellow Springs Police to do drug busts. He got fifteen years for what he did to me. He got 15 years for what he did to me, and a supportive testimony of the several people that were affected by it. What didn't come out at that time was that there was evidence of a wider prostitution, under a sex prostitution ring. That's what didn't come out. Now, I would hope that before now, somebody in the council, somebody in the police, would have made the difference so that any drug prostitution, any underage prostitution ring the police had been involved in at the time, that it stopped happening. I should hope that has been the case, and I should hope that you guys, which are in the gap between us and the police as far as the culture. This guy, he said he hated hippies, alright? You guys are in the middle, and I'm saying, you've heard us all, you've done a very amazing job of coming here and hearing everyone out, and really giving us your all. I really appreciate what you've done already. And I know only this to come across as that I'm solely putting you down. Have we done enough? I don't know. But I think we haven't done enough until the people on this panel can be assured that there's, today, there is no people in the police force that are aware of underage prostitution going on.
Thank you, Sean, for coming back up. Thanks to those of you who stuck around, we have two motions, or we have one resolution. Resolution, Judy, can you read that in, just by title only?
Uh, the Resolution 201701.
Yes. The Resolution of the Department of Independent Legal Counsel. Have you a motion?
So...
All those in favor, so you can hear by saying aye?
Aye.
A motion to schedule a special meeting for January 30th, 7:00, to continue this discussion, have more information to present to the community, we hope. And I would say at this point, we should plan on being in this space. Is council good with that? Can I get a motion? I guess that's a motion.
So...
All those in favor, so you can hear by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you all. This is just the beginning. We will be continuing, and we hope to see you all at the meeting on January 30th. And please provide as much input as you can. Motion adjourned. All those in favor, so you can hear by saying aye?
Aye.
Your adjourn, thank you.